Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Call the meeting to order. Okay, from left to right, please.
Jason DeRozier.
Jordan Oblin.
Jan Brown.
John Kilman.
Samantha Towns.
Okay. Everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the November and December 2017 minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous? Okay. Also, I'd like to have a motion, please have a motion to add to A swearing in of new members to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to swear in new members.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous?
Do you want to come up? Mr. Beetham, I didn't say you saw him or not. But I was supporting maintenance and constitution and laws.
I have support.
Maintenance and laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent there with.
Not inconsistent there with.
And now faithfully discharged.
And now faithfully discharged.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of Indian Trail Plan Board.
As a member of Indian Trail Plan Board.
So.
Okay.
Remember from ROTC, do the grip and grin.
2018 Planning Department work items.
Sure, I guess I'll take that one. I have rocks for hands here with the planning department. First, let me just kind of kick off and congratulate Mr. Gay to, on his appointment to, as a full-time member of the planning board. For those that may not know, Mr. Gay previously served on the planning board a couple of years ago and was extremely helpful as we worked through several large development projects and other items. And his perspective is always appreciated and always provide good feedback and raise good questions. And so, we're pleased to have him back on the planning board and continuing to serve and continuing to have his, continuing being willing to serve and give up some of his time. I'd also, just so you know, from the last town council meeting, the town council also appointed an alternate, the new alternate, Mr. Marcus McIntyre. He was not able to make it to tonight's meeting, but he just wanted to let us know that he's excited to join the planning board as an alternate and really to kind of jump in. And so, we'll look forward to swearing him in hopefully at the next meeting and give you a chance to meet him if you don't know Mr. McIntyre. So, what I, for tonight's meeting, we didn't have any cases to discuss with you or any pressing items or pressing business. So, tonight we'll have kind of a low, kind of a lower key tone to it, which is always a good thing from time to time. But I thought it was good, yeah, now that we're through the holidays and the new year, it'd be good to talk to you a little bit about what the planning department, some of the bigger items that the planning department will be working on in 2018. And as you well know, when the department is working on something, usually the planning board is right there, you know, kind of arm in arm with us. So, I wanted to kind of educate you or update you on some of the things that we're going to be working on. So, if with further ado, I'll go ahead and just get started. Now, the first thing I wanted to update you on, and many of you I'm sure are aware of this, is our work on the Seacrest Shortcut Small Area Plan. And if you recall, this is a study that was initiated a couple, probably six or eight weeks ago. It's a study in a corridor area along Seacrest Shortcut and surrounding some of the intersections as a result of the construction of the Monroe Expressway and some of the changes, not only to the physical geography out there, but also, you know, the travel patterns, transportation patterns in that area. So, just as a means of an overview, the map on your right is the study area boundary. It's roughly 1,300 acres in size. It's, you know, really, it's bisected by two, you know, our study area is bisected by two major areas. You know, one, obviously, Seacrest Shortcut and the Monroe Expressway, but also north-south by Sardis Church Road and Unionville Indian Trail Road. Now, this area is predominantly undeveloped, a lot of agriculture and kind of lower, kind of rural residential type development, less than 10 percent is developed. Vast majority that is developed is residential. There is, to our knowledge, one active business in the study area, and that is the Carriage House, kind of reception hall wedding facility, if you're familiar with it, on Seacrest-Shortcut. About a core of the study area is used for agriculture, and there's about 230 parcels in the area. Now, the, we're facilitating this study in partnership with Union County, as we've talked about in the past. Union County, and, you know, I think exercised some good foresight in wanting to kind of have a, you know, have all the communities in Union County doing some master planning along their, you know, kind of common frontage with the expressway. So, they worked with Hemby Bridge last year or two with them on developing kind of a small area plan for their portion. They're working with us in partnership for that section I just showed you, and Monroe will be working on in Elements and so on and so forth, going down and eventually down into the Wingate area. The study, well, is, you know, the town staffs and appointed elected officials will have an active role in the study. It is, the day-to-day nuts and bolts are being facilitated by consultant team, Gresham Smith, and the Central Line of Council of Governments. The COG is going to be facilitating most of our public engagement. They've got a really good skill set in managing public engagement, and so, they've been brought on to help us with that. The stakeholder committee, a stakeholder committee was formed. There are eight members in that committee, and we just held a meeting on January 4th right here in this building. And so, the stakeholder committee, I think, we turned out to be really pleased with the composition of the stakeholder committee. And just kind of give you an overview of who's on it, or in terms of representation, there's an Indian Trail and a Union County Planning Board member, and Mr. DeRozier is our appointed official from the planning board. We have two neighborhood representatives, one from the Bonterra HOA and one from the Arbrogan HOA, because those are the two closest neighborhoods that are bordering the study area. We have a representative from Merritt Field, Patrick Vermillion, who's kind of like an economic development, land development kind of interest, if you will. They are responsible for developing the old Hickory Business Park and continue to be active in that project. We also have someone from the real estate industry, Mr. Jay Ross of Ross Hagler Group, predominantly a residential realtor. And then, we also have the owner of the Carriage House, I mentioned, the only business in the study area. We wanted their interests represented as well, so we thought that would be valuable. And then, of course, the Monroe Union Economic Development Authority is a member of the stakeholder group. So, we met a week or so, about a week and a half ago, to kind of just kick off the study, talk about the scope of work, the schedule, what the goals we want to accomplish. And had just a really good discussion. That's a picture from the meeting that you see in the PowerPoint.
Got my best side?
Yeah, we did our best. I think, I think Mr. DeRozier there is on the bottom left there. I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, I'm his wingman, you know. And so, but we had some great discussion. And so, we got, we had a chance to solidify some, you know, we had some early questions we needed to answer as part of the study. What were we going to call the study? We've been calling it Seacrest-Shortcut Small Area Plan, Monroe Expressway Study, and some other names and some hybrids in between. But we ended up landing on the Seacrest-Shortcut Small Area Plan, and that was, everyone felt more comfortable with that, and that represented what this study was about. We also talked about some bigger picture items, you know. One of the things we did towards the end was, kind of had an open forum on some questions. And one of the things we raised to the folks in the real estate industry is, you know, what are they hearing about development interest around the Monroe Expressway? And Mr. Ross, who does mostly residential, hadn't really gotten a lot of exposure to that. But Mr. Chapman, who represents MPV, does a lot of economic, a lot of light industrial and commercial development in the Charlotte region, and was able to add, you know, just some really good perspective on what company, what locations that companies are looking for that come to them, looking for facilities, and really offered just some really, you know, good perspective that, you know, which was, you know, what they are seeing is, you know, companies, you know, the big companies are looking for sites either in South Carolina, which is by and large because of the tax incentives that are being offered at the state level. And it's gotten to the point, they said, it's almost like, you know, rent-free when you locate in South Carolina, to that, the 77 corridor, you know, to be located along the 77 corridor or the 85 corridor. Those are the three, you know, primary areas that big companies are wanting to locate. They felt, he felt, this gentleman felt that, you know, in terms of any kind of economic development or large employment type uses in that corridor, would probably be more companies that serve the local needs of the area. So, for example, maybe like an HVAC contractor, you know, that wanted to locate a facility because they have a big client base in Union County or Mecklenburg County in Union County, maybe, you know, maybe a plumbing contractor or something, you can kind of see the type of user, someone that has a customer base in Mecklenburg or Union Counties, and that offered a convenient location for them to be able to hop right back on the expressway and go and get onto 485 or 74 and go elsewhere to their customers' destination. So, I mean, just some very good practical information, I think, was discussed. Now, moving on, you know, in the stakeholder committee, the stakeholder group's primary role is going to be to more or less be a sounding board for proposals and ideas that get, you know, get brought up before they're brought to the planning board or town council or county commissioners. And so, they provide a really good practical ground-level, you know, feedback to us. Now, the next step in the study process is we're going to hold an open house on February 22nd. We've got the information there, it's going to be at the Carriage House. They were very generous in making their facility available, but we thought that would be the best location. It's actually great to hold a meeting there. If you've never, if you've been there, you'll understand that. If you haven't, just take my recommendation for it. But having it in this, having a facility in the study area, I think, would be very beneficial to everyone to get as many people as possible. Now, the other element to that is, an element to the study is a survey we're going to be initiating community-wide. It's going to be an online survey called MetroQuest. And this is something that the Central Line of Council of Governments really has spent a lot of time working on for other communities and will be doing something for us. I'm going to kind of hit a link here just so you can see how it, what it looks like. It might just take a moment. But what it's going to do is it's going to be an opportunity for folks, you know, on their phones or on their desktops to take a survey about the study area, kind of get a feel for what they're, you know, what they think is important in that area, what they'd like to see. But what's unique, and that's not terribly unique to do a survey like that, but what MetroQuest is very good at is having, it's really pictorial-based. And so, you're not just plugging in, you know, dropping, filling in a box or just taking kind of a blank, a very simple survey. It's very pictorial-based, like, you know, looking at a picture and saying, is this important to you versus this? And being able to do some rankings and whatnot. And looks like, I'm looking at my screen here, the, I can see it on my computer, but unfortunately, it's not populating on the screen, so I apologize for not testing that out before this meeting. Well, I'd be happy to send you a link offline just so you can see it. And so, it's still in a beta form, so the questions are still being refined. The stakeholder group was helpful with that to help us ask better questions of the public and, but it's just a very, I guess, just very, a very visually oriented survey, which we think will be, encourage people to want to take it and just basically be able to provide better feedback that way. So, we're excited to be able to offer that. Before I, so again, just a key thing is, you'll get, you'll see more announcements, but the open house being the next step. And then, we would really encourage all the planning board members to attend if you're able to, and certainly, you know, share the information with your friends and neighbors in the community if you think they might have an interest in this area of town. Before I transition on, does anyone have any questions about the study? I know we've talked about it in small bites in the past. Okay, thank you. Okay, and just in terms of a schedule, you don't have to read every little dot there, but the schedule for the study is to, we'd like to have it done this summer. And so, we have a very, you know, a very aggressive schedule for it. And the reason being, you know, the reason why we have an aggressive schedule for this study is, one, we have a very focused scope of work, so we feel like it's manageable from a content standpoint. And two, we have a lot of development interest in this corridor area. There are projects that have already been submitted for rezoning both at the town and the county level, and we're, we believe that that trend is going to continue. And so, we really want to get this study adopted as soon as possible, given the amount of development interest that's occurring. So, we want to get this done sooner rather than later. Okay, so, let's go ahead and talk about the, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move on to the next step, I would like to ask Mr. DeRozier his impression of the meeting and if there's anything we can do to assist him more.
Great questions. I think the impression of the meeting, like Rox said, really robust, pulling in a lot of different people from the different planning boards, the neighborhoods that are there. Lot of focus on what this area is going to be. I think one of the questions that was raised, though, during that was, how are we stacking up in the scope of looking at this area to the areas that are surrounding it? So, for those of you that might not know, but there was a study done just above this in Hemby Bridge, and then Monroe is doing their own study with North Rocky River Road. So, really, to answer your question, I think it's a really great working group in the premise of not just the group that was there committed to being at the open houses and really get the information out there, but then also just in sourcing out, okay, what are these other groups thinking about for this corridor as well? What's that going to look like? Is it going to be in sync with the rest of the area and so forth? But for the, for the plan of this, I mean, really, it's a lot of the public that's, that's, that we're taking it from. So, I think the stakeholder meeting is really just kind of, in a sense, guiding those questions, trying to gauge what's the most important and then putting that out to the public. And then, what you're going to find is later in the process of the slide ahead is that window is when those results come back, and we do have that plan. So, at this point, not really much else until I think that survey comes back and we have a much clearer idea when the data is condensed and what we're looking at as far as, and I know we can't, when you do get the link, there's things like, to Rox's point, you're able to put exactly, so if you want to see more single-family housing, the survey tool allows you, when you get to that point, to actually place where you'd like to see more single-family housing within this study area. So, that's where it gets into a real great job of being pictorial and allowing the citizens, anyone really, that has access to this, and that, that was the comment, was like, share it wide. So, you know, we want this, we want as many people as possible. I was going to curb it to the end, Rox, but the Chamber of Commerce, I don't know if anyone's engaged them, but I know now that we have a date for the open house, reaching out to the Union County Chamber of Commerce, make sure that they get businesses involved in coming into this as well, and they have that link.
And I think that's a, that's a great, that's a great point. One of the things we did ask the stakeholder group was, who's, you know, who should be, you know, who is not at the table or who is someone, a individual or a group that should be engaged as part of this process? And just like you said, the Chamber of Commerce should be invited to the open houses. And I'd kind of throw that question to the dais tonight, is, you know, who do you think should be, you know, should we reach out and make sure that they are aware of the open house and any other steps in the project?
I hope that, as far as residential, I hope senior residences are considered. Because more and more, you know, as we see, more and more developers are coming in with age-targeted, you know.
I think the scope of this stage, though, is really just to define this area with the, with the zoning that we would like so that it's in place. And then, once that zoning's in place, of course, anything residential would, would be, or could potentially be age-targeted, age-restricted, but that would be then a developer thing, wouldn't that, is that correct, Rox?
No, Jason, what I'm referring to is that businesses who would provide services, you know, for senior residents, I mean, senior citizens. Because number one, they, they may need caretakers and, you know, all sorts of things, and that's a business. So, I hope those things will be taken into consideration.
And they, and I can assure you, at least from my perspective, very much are. I mean, if I can, even on here, I mean, I think the biggest and largest concern with the map has been this area that's been sandwiched between the Monroe Expressway and Seacrest-Shortcut, because it does really make a gigantic rectangle that is going to be more light industrial, commercial type. But again, the scope of what we're here to do is to find out really what the citizens want out of this area. And then, once we do get that information back, then to really kind of, you know, instead of having it just be these shades of green, really lay out what that 10 to 15-year zoning map looks like. Once that zoning map is there, now we have the guideline to be able to bring in the industry in the areas we've just defined as, you know, that are for commercial, for light industrial, and then, of course, the housing developments soon follow in places that we've said are zoned for the type of residential we want. Because that's the bigger issue, and I know that that's in the survey, but when we say residential, there's, when you see the survey, you'll know exactly what I'm speaking about, but it is the, it gets very specific. So, do you want to see, you know, single-family housing? And then, I think there's even some consideration being given to what density of single-family housing would you want here? You know, and then, do you want duplex, triplex, or do you want apartment buildings, town homes, you know, apartment complexes? And so, there's a variety. When we say housing, it runs the gamut and allows that citizen to then rank what's most important. Are they, when they say housing, do they mean what's most important to them are apartments? Or is it single families? And so, that's the data that we're waiting to get back from the people. Okay? I know, Art, you have?
You know, one of the questions that I have and am concerned is, all of that's well and good, but are we going to have the infrastructure in place before they start building all this stuff, especially single-family homes or apartments? We have to think about fire safety, we have to think about all of the different things that have to be in place. The sewer, the water, the electricity, that, all these things have to be in place before the developers are turned loose, or otherwise, they're going to be in the same mess that we're in.
Well, I would, and I would add just a couple of points here. I mean, yes, certainly, the, a key point or a product of the study, which, you know, will be informed with community feedback, technical analysis, staff and stakeholder feedback and other sources, is it ultimately coming up with, you know, what we like to call a future land use map of, you know, what, how, you know, how should this area develop over the course of the next 10, 20 years? And so, I think with that, you know, in terms of housing, I'll just call it housing preferences, you know, if that's going to be, you know, resident, you know, single-family residential or maybe it's more smaller town home, you know, considerations, I think that there's an opportunity to kind of share, you know, that type of feedback. Or is it an opportunity for, is there, or just a desire for more specialized housing like the age-restricted or targeted models? And so, you know, I think there's definitely an opportunity to, you know, share that type of, you know, feedback in this process, that that would be something that they'd, you know, that the community wants to see incorporated into this area, that it's ripe for something along those lines. You know, in terms of the infrastructure, I mean, I think the first thing I would, I would look at, and it's reflective on the map, is, you know, the Monroe Expressway itself is a phenomenal infrastructure investment that's going to be, you know, online, fingers crossed, end of this year, which is going to really be helpful for the transportation network because, you know, really, it's, it's going to, you know, be beneficial for those, you know, the commuter that would need, that works in Charlotte and, but wants to, you know, live in the Indian Trail community where they can hop right on the expressway and get a near-straight shot into uptown Charlotte or wherever their destination may be and really shave some time, you know, off their commute. So, that's a major infrastructure investment that's going to be in line, online, well before any of the, any, any potential development projects were to be approved or constructed. And, you know, the county does, you know, the county is working with the expressway, Turnpike Authority, you know, on the infrastructure and how it relates to the expressway, and they have their own, you know, master plans for water and sewer. And so, you know, the, the communities do have, you know, infrastructure plans for the anticipated growth. You know, oftentimes with water and sewer, you know, the county's pretty clear that they expect the development community to fund a lot of that when it's needed to serve a development project, so.
But if I can interject for a second.
Yes, please.
One of the points I did take from the stakeholder meeting was the fact that they went through great pain to make sure that none of the infrastructure, the resources, water lines, sewer lines, electrical were severed and then were furthermore accessible. So, they designed the expressway around the existing infrastructure to make sure that it is available for the future access, okay? And that it's accessible to be worked on and reliable and so forth, okay? And that's from the state's, like, info that was given to us.
One more question, though. What about, all of that is rural roads out there.
The, if I may, Rox, the, that was very much brought up. The, unfortunately, I don't have very good news, and what I'm going to repeat is from the North Carolina, you know, state of North Carolina, which basically said they are not super interested with this study about hearing issues like this road needs to be widened, this intersection is terrible, because they're looking forward to the Monroe Expressway alleviating some of, they know it's not going to all, but in other words, it's, it's a cautiously optimistic approach to the infrastructure on, I guess, this side of 74, as you will, right? Because the plans are in place for the Monroe roadside already, that's established, going to start. So, they're looking at the expressway to take some of that traffic off some of those rural roads of Seacrest-Shortcut and Unionville Indian Trail Road and so forth, okay? But they're state roads, and that's, that's going to fall to the state when those numbers hit.
One of the gentlemen that was in charge of looking at all of the roads, when they were trying to decide whether they were going to put signals or a roundabout in front of Sardis Elementary School, I said, "It's going to be terrible here." And he said to me, "Oh, all these people are going to take the expressway to go up to Charlotte." And I said, "No way. People that live in these developments are not going to take that expressway to go two miles to get dumped onto 74. They're going to come the normal way in the back roads." And that's our problem. The people that are being affected are not the people that are going to be driving the expressway coming from down south or coming, going, going south or coming north. It's the communities that live around that expressway. They're already jammed up in traffic because we didn't have the foresight to make sure that the roads were there before all of these developments. And if we continue to do that, the same thing has happened. If their only concern is that expressway, then we're in trouble. They have to be concerned about these roads and the traffic that's going to be developed because people are not going to use the expressway that live in the local area.
Well, and again, I think that's good discussion. I think it's something definitely that I would encourage you to attend the open house and not only to observe and learn, but also to, you know, share any feedback you have. I do believe that when you look, when you're looking at the study area here, where you've got, you know, the major, you've got, you know, one major expressway interchange, it doesn't show up on the map, but there's another one over at Indian Trail Road. I, you know, I could foresee, you know, a lot of families or what have you using the expressway to get into it, into Charlotte from the study area. And so, I think it, it's going to provide a quick, safe and efficient access into, into the Charlotte community, whether, you know, it's to go for employment or for shopping or other destinations and, because that road's going to be wide open to get into Charlotte or Matthews area. But again, I mean, it's good discussion, and I think- But again, I mean, it's good discussion, and I think it'd be important to bring this discussion into the open house, and, you know, one of the things that Mr. Droger's role here is, and I'm glad Ms. Towns asked him to speak, is to share what he learns at the, at the stakeholder meetings or through other processes and bring it back to the planning board and kind of, you know, educate the planning board on what's going on. So, you know, it won't be, when it does finally come to you for any kind of adoption process for a recommendation, that you've got this background and you kind of understand how the study has been, you know, unfolding. And so, I think that's, I think that's exactly what this process is meant to be. So, I appreciate Mr. Droger, you know, sharing his observations and what he's seeing and learning, and again, we're at the very beginning of the study, it just started, we're by no means, you know, we're a month or two into it, not even two, a month or, you know, into it. So, again, good discussion, good project, and we just, the key is that we want to get it done as quickly as we can to have it in place. Yes, ma'am?
On an ending note, I hope that Union County will learn its, has learned its lesson. When I moved here in 2007, shortly after I moved here, about a month or so, a moratorium had to be placed on building because there was not enough water and sewer. So, I hope the planning is really well thought out so that we won't have to face the challenges that we have in the past.
Sure. I think the landscape, I only think, you know, again, I don't work for Union County Public Works, but I think from my understanding, the landscape changed dramatically between the period when you first came here and the way they operate now. They have adopted an ordinance that's pretty, you know, pretty strict in managing the, you know, the capacity that they, you know, delegate on to a given development project and tracking that and making sure it's within the overall capacities of their plants or pump stations or what have you. So, I don't know if that meticulousness was occurring quite as well during the period that you're referring to, but it's always, you know, a good, let's not forget the past, you know, I think that's the, a good, you know, a good warning.
And on the same note, I mean, just for the record or off the record, I mean, what, if anything, does the town of Indian Trail, the county of Union have as ammunition for the states? I mean, we're dealing, all these roads are state roads, they're all maintained by the state, grown by, or widened by the state, and, but yet, we still have, you know, obviously some real traffic issues, right? So, I mean, do you see this as just like the never-ending kind of circle about how we're constantly kind of championing for more infrastructure, larger roads, less traffic, and the state is just kind of like that, you know, where it's like the David and Goliath story, or like, what is?
I mean, I'll just answer it from a couple of different perspectives. I mean, I think, one, I think the discussion about roads and traffic and the need for more transportation investment is the same conversation that I'd say every other, you know, small or large municipality is having across the country that is growing. Same conversation, same exact conversation, different environment, different funding tools, whatnot, but I think they're all, everyone's having the same, you know, is having the same conversation and will in perpetuity. And I think, so I think that's, this is not a unique thing with Indian Trail. I think, two, I would share with you that I would, I would view Indian Trail slash Union County, Western Union County, as in a transportation renaissance period at, you know, at present. And what do I mean by that is, first, you know, look at the investment that you have there, you know, a 30-year road project is finally on the ground, you know, nearly on the ground, and it's going to provide, you know, relief, you know, it's debatable, some people say a little bit of relief, some people say a lot of relief, but it's definitely going to provide a significant amount of relief to our community for moving, you know, moving people between regional destinations. And so, that's, that's very important. We've got, on the other side of town, you've got the Old Monroe widening that is not, is no longer, you know, urban, suburban legend, you know, it's actually a defined project and it's coming to fruition pretty soon. You know, we've got the Chestnut Parkway project that's coming, you know, coming not too far thereafter with Old Monroe, that's going to provide a new north-south connector in our community. That's monument, you know, it's going to go over the railroad. That's monumental. There's going to be some future widening of Wesley Chapel Road, there's going to be, you know, between 74 and Old Monroe, there's going to be the downtown kind of Main Street project, which is more, you know, more geared towards pedestrian, say, you know, aesthetics and pedestrian and economic development and pedestrian walkability, but still, that's a major, major project. And so, those are just, you know, we have the roundabout right here on the edge of our study area that Mr. Spur was mentioning in front of the elementary school. So, I would argue, you know, and I don't have all those numbers in my head, I'm sure Mr. Sadik behind me could probably give you a big number, but I would, I would, taking all those projects in total over the next, I don't know, five, eight years, I mean, you're in a transportation renaissance. What other, you know, going back to those other communities, I tell you, everyone across the country is having the same conversation, go talk to them, talk to the other small to medium-sized communities and find out how many have that, have that many road projects going on within, you know, five, eight, 10-year period. It wouldn't be as, it wouldn't be very many. And so, I would, you know, I would just, you know, leave you with that, that message. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We good?
Did it?
I just wanted to say a brief word, that's all. Okay. So, let's talk about the next project that we're going to be working on this year, and this is going to be a kind of a project between the planning and engineering departments, and that is with the Unified Development Ordinance and Land Development Regulations Manual Update. We've, pretty close to ironing out an agreement with, you know, Stewart Engineering, who will be the lead consultant, you know, on the project. They work out of both Charlotte and the city of Raleigh, and so, they have a really strong North Carolina presence, and we're, you know, both departments are excited to be working with them. We hope to be able to initiate the study late, you know, late January, maybe early February, and we're anticipating this having roughly a six-month, you know, project duration as well. You know, we don't want, we want to keep all of our projects on a, on a manageable schedule, but not have them, you know, drift off too long in duration and really, you know, get as much work done and as quickly as we can. And really how, you know, we're seeing these are kind of a, from the UDO perspective, definitely, you know, a 10-year kind of what I'm referring to as a strategic update of the UDO. And, you know, that, the UDO was actually adopted, and I can, you can actually see it, I guess I'm a little off, maybe about a nine-year and one-month update, but it was adopted at the end of 2008. And, you know, we've had, you know, nine, 10 years of work with this UDO, and we've got, we've been able to test it a little bit to see, you know, what works and what doesn't, and what holes, you know, are in it that need to be patched or just simply rebuilt. And so, we feel, we see, we feel this is a really great time to be working on the UDO, get it also in compliance with a lot of changes in state law and in case law from, you know, decisions by the Supreme Court and other court, major courts. And we think this will be, is a good opportunity to kind of wrap this up in a, in a, in a single project. The other part is, you know, with the, kind of with the Land Development Regulations Manual is kind of modernizing our standards into a, you know, into what is not only needed in the community, but what is the current industry standard, particularly for engineering in terms of how roads are built and the thickness of asphalt and other minor little details that, you know, you may not ever think about, that are needed to build a strong neighborhood or a commercial shopping center or whatnot, but are essential in terms of the infrastructure that's made. It's important to have very good standards so the infrastructure does its job, but also lasts and isn't a maintenance burden on a given community. Similar to the, to the Seacrest, Seacrest Shortcut Small Area Plan, there'll be a stakeholder group process with that, again, like a sounding board. Haven't formulated that, the composition of that group yet, but, you know, Planning Board will certainly have a representation on that as well as some, possibly some other groups within Indian Trail, and certainly from some outside groups that might have some valuable perspective to help inform the development of that study. So, again, that study will be kicking off hopefully end of this month, early next month, and we're super excited to be, to begin on that. It's something we've been wanting to do for a long time, and I know the Planning Board's definitely been kind of chomping at the bit a little bit with that. So, does anyone have any questions about, about this project? Yes, sir?
I just want to say something that I'm really happy to see the stakeholder group being formed in all these different projects, because that's very, very important, that we have people from outside the government aspect looking at it, and sometimes, you know, it's somebody else's eyes seeing something, that'll bring something up to, that you would never notice. So, I want to congratulate you on doing that.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's something that, you know, the towns has identified as an important element in a lot of the things we do, not just these technical studies, but in a lot of our operations is, you know, again, I always say it's that sounding board, you know, make, you know, tell me if I'm about to jump off the cliff, you know, please, I'd love that free advice. Or if you've got another perspective of, a way of viewing a problem that we hadn't thought of, that would be great. And so, that's, and that's also a benefit of having an outside consultant kind of work with us and, and preparing these updates, because one of the things we've asked them to do is, they, you know, they work not only on the code-writing side, but they also have a land development arm of their practice and help, you know, help us know, again, what is the contemporary standard in 2018? You know, we may have an older outdated standard, what are other communities doing to solve the same problems that we're having to solve, just like we talked about, you know, the transportation and road infrastructure challenges? So, that's also a benefit of having an outside team kind of look at these, look at our UDO and land development regs for a fresh perspective and, and help, help with that. So, again, also, you know, not, you don't have to give me any, am I asking for any feedback tonight, but, you know, be thinking about with, from, from planning board who might be a good, you know, representative, or if you had an interest, you know, yourself, you know, just be thinking about that, because this will be a very important project. So, I'm just throwing it out there, not asking for a response. And I think, yeah, I think I did say it's a six-month project, so this is also something, ideally, we'd like to be able to get done in the summertime. The last project I want to talk to you about, and this will probably, this will probably kick off when we finish up with the UDO and land development regs updated and the Seacrest Shortcut study, and that is updating our zoning map. And that, you know, we take zoning map amendments to you and the council on a regular basis where we're looking at individual properties or maybe just a small cluster of properties that are, you know, a property owner or developers are wanting to change the zoning to do something different on the property or do something more intense. Well, in this case, we, we need to kind of comprehensively readopt our entire zoning map. And so, the reason why we need to do that is, there's a couple of things that we feel as, you know, kind of the technical planning experts for the town, need to be resolved with our zoning map. And one is, like I said in the first bullet, fix some errors. There are some properties that are zoned wrong and on the map, and I would love to be able to tell you the answer of why they're zoned that wrong. There's a couple of commercial properties that have residential zoning and absolutely shouldn't, and there, there was some translation processes that happened when the, when the UDO was adopted, you know, they had this one district, and it was supposed to translate into this new district, the old district would translate into the new district with the adoption of the UDO, but that didn't always happen precisely. And so, there's a couple fixes that we need to adopt as part of that as a town. The other piece to that, we think from a readoption, is doing some housekeeping changes. Right now, you know, we've got a lot of, we've, the town of Indian Trail has kind of managed development through a lot of master planning efforts. You know, a lot of our larger neighborhoods, Bonterra is an example, Holly Park is another example, that were, Chris Mark is another example, that were approved through kind of what I'll just call like a master planning process, and maybe had a special use permit associated with it, a conditional zoning district perhaps, or some other regulatory tool, where you have multiple different types of uses, you know, on the property. And in some cases, it might be, you know, quote unquote, a mixed-use community. But when you look at the zoning map, you just see one district on a given piece of property. So, for example, I'm looking at Bonterra, and I see a big gold color that's on top of Bonterra, which is, I believe, our SF4 district. But yet, we all know that Bonterra has a commercial area in the middle, a town center village area, but really, looking at the zoning map, you really wouldn't know that. And so, we think there's some improvements in how we, in how this map is prepared to help you zero in and identify any mixed-use areas, but also even from a labeling perspective, and actually label the case numbers on the map and just do a better job representing the information on these master plan communities and actually help reduce some mistakes, and we've, you know, that can happen when you use these broad categories. The other is, the other change we want to kind of look at is the SF1 district, okay, single-family residential one. That's the beige color that you see on the zoning map, and it's kind of like, I'll call it our base zoning, you know? If it doesn't have, if it's not developed, what's it zoned? 99% chance it's zoned SF1. Well, back in the, the super, super high-growth periods that Ms. Towns was referencing a decade or more ago, you know, we would, we would annex projects in, from Union County, and they would have been approved in Union County and even partially developed in Union County, and we'd annex them in, and the town would just slap that SF1 district on to them, even though SF1 may not be representative of the type of development it was. So, SF1 is a low-density residential district, half-acre lot sizes, you know, it's a, it's an older, you know, kind of base-type zoning district, yet it got applied on a lot of properties or a lot of subdivisions that don't even closely represent SF1, the SF1 district. And, you know, Mr. Spur, you know, a lot of the neighborhoods along Unionville, Indian Trail Road are zoned SF1, but, I mean, those lots might be a quarter acre in size, sometimes even smaller, not a really good representation. So, what we want to do is take a look at those existing developed areas that are zoned SF1 and find the close, a closer zoning district that more closely resembles how the neighborhood was built. Doesn't change anything for the person on the ground, the homeowner, but what it'll do is it'll produce just a higher-quality map. So, when you look at the zoning map and you see, you know, how a property is zoned, you'll have a better representation of the development character of that space. And when you look at maybe a rezoning and you see a vacant piece of property that someone wants to rezone, you'll have a better understanding of how the other areas are zoned relative to their development. So, that's, it's, that's going to be, I think, again, and that's a housekeeping-type change, but it's something I think that's going to be important to do for an accurate zoning map. Yes, Ms. Towns?
Quick question. Since you're planning some housekeeping changes, how does the comprehensive plan, is that still valid?
Yes, it's still va, yes, it's still valid.
Because I've noticed, you know, in my research with various projects that we've had, some of the developers are unaware as to, a perfect example, that a boulevard may be going down the street of a project that they, they're looking at to develop.
I guess I, excuse me, I guess I'd need to know more specifically what you're referring to, because, because that's one, that's one of the things we do when we meet with property owners or developers, and they, they have bigger plans for their properties, we'll look at the plans with them and share with them any kind of, not only future land use, but also if there is any road projects or thing, or even a trail project that might be going through their property, and how does it, you know, complement or not their plans?
Are you sure?
Again, I'd need, I needed to know more, I guess I'm just.
Yes. You know, the project that we were, that the developer wanted to build by the elementary school at the time, Sardis Elementary? He wanted to do some sort of circle or whatever, roundabout, but he was unaware that that area was slated to have boulevard lanes.
So.
I mean, it didn't get approved.
Yeah, I recall, I recall the subdivision, it was going to be an annexation right at Oakwood Lane and Sardis Elementary, or Sardis Church Road. I, you know, we were, I recall, yeah, the traffic circle that we talked about a few minutes ago, the developer was well aware of that and even was going to contribute money towards the funding of that.
Yes, but he didn't realize that four-lane boulevards would be going right past there, so how could the circle fit in? You know, which way would they? You know, which way would they have to change it in order for the traffic to, to flow properly?
Right. And, and so the, you know, the town who's in, in NC DOT, who's designing the, that roundabout is, is familiar with, you know, the road, the road geometry and is, is designing around it. So there, there was, I, I'm not recalling any conflict between.
Yeah. No, I think he, he was, he had designed it on the existing pattern that was there. He, he was unaware of the fact that the four-lane boulevards were scheduled to be placed on that, in that area in the future.
Okay. Yeah. One of the things we do is we always make sure that developers or proprietors are aware of what we call future rideaway. What is, you know, not every road, but most major roads that haven't been fully improved have a future rideaway. And so, for example, Sardis Road, I have no doubt it, you know, has a future rideaway. And so we always make sure that they're aware of that and that they, and our UDO requires that they dedicate the rideaway if they're not making the road improvement itself, and sometimes that they are. They, they would dedicate the rideaway so their project does not conflict with any future road projects or minimize any conflict. So I'd have to, I guess maybe we just have to talk in more detail, you know, about that one so I could better understand. But, but it's a good point to educate everyone about the future rideaway concept that, you know, our comprehensive plan has, where we've designated every major road as a, with a future corridor. And DOT has done the same thing and it works with us. Yes, sir?
Just curious, when we reason on the Roskin property to light industrial.
Okay.
I know across the street Berry Triplas was still, at the time, commercial rather than light industrial. And I know we talked about it, probably for their future benefit, if they were going to do any kind of expansion or whatever, that would have to be addressed. Would this be a time where they would, would you readdress that, their zoning now through this? Or would you just still wait until they decided to do some expansion if they were?
We would, you know, with this project, we would keep it to just kind of the, and there's one more topic area I'll talk about, but try to keep it just under the, the housekeeping kind of umbrella. I agree with you. I recall that conversation and I agree with you that that's not the, the, and just so everyone's familiar, this is a property on Wesley Chapel Road near the, the CSX interchange. And it's a big, you know, one of the biggest industrial properties probably in, in the town of Indian Trail. And it has commercial zoning to it. And I'm not sure how we got commercials or why. But we felt that, we agree that light, some sort of industrial classification would be better suited. I think for a classification for the, I think a, a proposal like that would need to be property owner initiated versus coming in under the umbrella of like a, kind of a housekeeping type process or under a civic, you know, a town-initiated kind of zoning activity. Even though I, I don't disagree that it, it's probably a good idea to have that come through.
I think it just got thrown into commercial when they annexed that. They were already there in the town annexed. So I was just curious about that.
I agree. It's a little, for me, you know, it's a little bit of a head scratcher too, but, yeah. But, so, yeah, I think we would try to, we would, we would not want to include owner-initi- projects, rezonings you would normally be associated with owner-initiated. Yes, sir, Mr. Spur.
When you go through the zoning process, Indian Trail has a lot of donut holes in it where they're not annexed into the town. They're still county.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible during that period of time that we might be able to go out to these donut holes and say, "Hey, look, we want to really annex you and, and make an effort to clean up the mess"?
That's really something, I mean, we can always, yes, we can always, you know, spread the gospel as you will, if you will, in terms of the benefits of being a part of Indian Trail. And, and really, that's something we do, we try to do on a continuous basis. And we've actually put together some literature for property, for developed properties, like a subdivision or other residential property that talks about, that answers that question, what is the benefit, why, why do I want to be a part of Indian Trail? And it's not only, it, it goes into not only the financial aspects, but it also talks about just the light, I'll just call it like the, the living here kind of aspects of having, you know, more close representation, local, local government representation, you know, hey, if you have a problem, you know, right now you have to drive down to Monroe and, and talk to a commissioner, and I'm sure they're, they're a wonderful person and very intelligent. But, you know, does that, that commissioner might be from Waxaw or it might, they might be from Union, in the Unionville area or wherever. Are they going to understand your issue when you're really more closely, you know, aligned probably with Indian Trail in terms of what's going on in your daily life? And so there's a lot of benefits, I think, to be, being a part of Indian Trail. And we've met with some neighborhoods to, some HOAs to, to do that. But I think as part of the process, if, if, you know, we come in contact with other neighbor, you know, with unincorporated neighborhoods that are eligible for annexation, we would definitely like to start those conversations and see if there's an, an interest on both sides that makes sense. Yes, sir?
I think to expound on that with our, a couple of years ago, well, prior to two or three years ago, the town could go in and actually annex. And there really wasn't a lot that the, those home, those landowners could do. But the state of North Carolina changed the law now that a, if I'm, I think I'm correct, that the, the towns cannot take the property unless the owner's request to be annexed.
In essence, I think it's also tied to a vote at the end of the day too. And, and, you know, and so, yeah, North Carolina had, years ago, had, I don't know how many years, maybe if it's been five or seven, but however, had some of the strongest annexation laws in the state. And what it does, it helps you, you know, and there's pros and cons. It's depending on your perspective. But from the municipal perspective, it helps you build strong cities. And so that's why you have like a city like Charlotte that's, you know, relatively pretty strong versus a city like Atlanta, which is, you know, if you, Atlanta is a strong region, but the city of Atlanta is relatively small. You know, not, not, doesn't have like the, the power or the, the strength that, that maybe a place like Charlotte does, which has a much larger geography. And so that's, that's the, the difference is, you know, the, the reason Atlanta is small and Charlotte's larger is the annexation laws. And so for, however you believe, you know, there's some, I'm sure some cons that you could identify with that too. But that's, the state decided that there's, that our annexation laws were a little too strong and dialed them back. That basically, by and large, it's an owner-initi- it's a property owner-initiated process.
That's why Indian Trail's as big as it is because we, years ago, went on a rapid annexation program. And so that's why we are the size we are.
Yeah. Okay. Good discussion. The last piece I wanted to bring up just was also, is part of this process and we'll see how, how, how much of it, you know, how big of an endeavor it is. But there is some inconsistency between the, we have what's called the downtown overlay district. And that's sort of like the regulatory side of the downtown, you know, district. And then versus the downtown master plan area. They're two, they're actually two different boundaries and geographies. And we think that they should ultimately be aligned with one another. And so we want to kind of investigate to see if this process, the readoption of the zoning map would be appropriate for getting, you know, for enlarging the downtown overlay to include the master plan area. We haven't delved too deeply into it, but we're going to look into it to see if it's appropriate and, and if it's manageable. So that would be another element. But really, it's time to do, the big picture is it's time to do a kind of a major housekeeping readoption of our zoning map. There may even be some things from the UDO update project that necessitate making some zoning changes. And so we think this will be a great project to jump into once we have the UDO and land development regs adopted and the SEACRIS study completed. And so that's kind of how we're queuing up 2018 from kind of a strategic plan and, and study standpoint. If, you know, with the SEACRIS shortcut study underway, UDO land development regs getting underway pretty soon. And then following up with this zoning map update. It's something we've been really excited and wanted to tackle for a good while. So I thought it'd be a really good time to share, share this with you on a night like tonight, since we don't have any cases before you. Get some feedback. We've had some fantastic discussion. And again, I want to encourage you to all be a part of these processes. And we're going, we are going to gently expect it because your, your feedback is so valuable. So, yes, sir?
You may not be able to speak to this quite yet just because the UDO LDR stuff is just now getting kicked off. But are there any plans in place to add any new types of zoning or, you know, new zoning classifications as part of this undertaking? Just for example, not that it would be relevant, but like a transit-oriented district would be something that historically the town doesn't have. But is that something that I guess you guys would be looking into? Or are there, is there a need for any kind of new zoning classification within the town limits?
Yeah, I'll, I'll share a couple of perspectives on that. I just, you know, and it's at the tip of my tongue because I just finalized the update. We have a staff update list too, which is 11 pages long, single-spaced. And so I was proofing it over the weekend to get to the consultants. But a couple of areas in terms of districts, one is looking at, you might be familiar, some of you may be familiar with our institutional district that we have. Most of our, our municipal facilities are zoned institutional, which is largely for some, I think, some private office, government facilities and parks and things like that. Which is fine for, you know, for how we've used it before, but we think we can get some more utility out of that district. And so we've asked the, the consultants to look at creating an in-between district. But, you know, something between a commercial classification and industrial classification. Sort of like an, maybe an office and institutional type district. Because sometimes we get a lot of, we, we get projects or, or concepts that are presented to us that don't clean, you know, that don't, aren't perfect, a perfect fit for a commercial district. And, but, and neither are they a perfect fit for, like, let's say, a light industrial district. But they may fit somewhere nice in an in-between type district. Like, and I'm just saying, I'm just calling it office institutional. Maybe it'd have a little commercial, maybe it'd have some office, maybe have a little bit of like a light industrial or research and development type aspects to it. Yeah, sort of like that, that in-between district between commercial and, and industrial uses. So that's, that's one example we've asked them. And we, and we just suggested, well, hey, maybe instead of creating a brand-new district, look at the institutional district and see if you can make it better. Another is, and we don't, I don't know the answer to this, but we're just going to ask them to look at is, do we have too many residential districts? You know, we, we've got SF1 through SF5 and then a rural, single-family district, you know, the, the green colors. And we don't have too many properties on that, more on the, the eastern side of the community. But do we have too many? And I don't know the answer to that. I just want, I, I would like to have, you know, the consultant just look at that and, and give us their best, you know, judgment is, should we, you know, do any of the districts need to be consolidated or eliminated? To your point, I mean, I know you just brought up transit-oriented just because that's a big topic area in other, in other communities. We've looked at, you know, is there a benefit to creating, you know, a quote-unquote, mixed-use district to achieve, you know, to help us achieve mixed-use, you know, development in, in the appropriate areas? And, or, you know, can that just be accomplished through our, you know, improving our village center overlay? And, and so these are just kind of, you know, a lot of times these are just kind of questions we're asking them. You know, give us, you know, their best, you know, recommendation or guidance. But those are, from a district standpoint, those are some, or from a newer modified district standpoint, that's kind of some of the ideas we have so far. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Downtown area, the 47 acres that are there, any interest in developing that?
I think the property owner has interest in developing. Yes, I think the, I think, you know, that the property owner interest has, you know, certainly a desire to, to develop that property. And I'm sure they're, you know, excited about the downtown mainstream. I call it the Main Street project and that'll be, I mean, a wonderful compliment to all the properties, whether they're vacant or developed in downtown. And so, yeah, so I think there is definitely interest in wanting to do something with that property. Any other questions? No? Okay. The last thing I want to talk to you about is just, just something that you, you probably already know. But just, you know, we've, we expect 2018 to also include a lot of rezoning activity. Again, we get a lot of development inquiries. We've seen, we, we know there's a lot of projects that are just in, in their early stages of just trying to be, you know, assembled, if you will. They certainly have to go through an approval process, which includes the planning board and ultimately, you know, with the town council. But they are, you know, we just see a lot of interest. And it's not just Indian Trail. It's a lot of the other communities in Union County and Mecklenburg County as well. We are seeing a particular interest along the SEACRIS shortcut, Monroe Expressway corridor. And again, that's one of the reasons why we're really pushing that study to get done. So we think it'd be a valuable contribution as we look at development in that area. So that's kind of how 2018 is, is shaping up for us. Mr. Spur, you're raising your hand.
Just one more thought came to mind. And I was thinking about it the other day as I was driving up 74 and looking at some of the buildings that had been closed down, specifically the one that's sitting there just right next to the Sonic. It's, it's an old house and it's boarded up. It's an eyesore. We've got a number of properties like that that are here in Indian Trail. They're just, they've either been abandoned or they've been not maintained. Is there any plan on maybe getting rid of those?
No, I mean, there's, there, no, the town, the town does, does not have a plan to, to demolish given structures. We do have a, a minimum housing ordinance that does seek to make sure that homes in our community are meeting, you know, a minimum standard for health and safety. And, and so we do have an ordinance, you know, guided towards that. But, you know, a couple of the properties you mentioned there, you know, on 74, I believe the one by the Sonic is, is at or near 74. And, and I would believe that, you know, the, the strength of that area being near a strong commercial corridor that, you know, something will likely come, a development will likely come, a development project will come out of that property and, you know, address that issue from, you know, private industry side.
But is there any way that the town can do anything before that happens? Because this, that one house looks absolutely terrible. It looks like it's going to fall apart. The windows are all boarded up all around it. The grass is growing high. It is really an eyesore. And it's been that way for at least six or seven years.
Yeah, from a, so from what the town can do, but I mean, we can certainly have our code enforcement staff take a look at it. And, I mean, it's tall grass, absolutely. We can do something about that. You know, in terms of, you know, the structure on place, you know, if it's a, if it has any commercial aspects to it, you know, we don't, you know, we don't, we don't demolish, you know, you know, any commercial structures. But we can send code enforcement out there to investigate, see what tools we have that can help that property.
What about the possibility of looking at it at a different aspect and saying, hey, look, you know, this piece of property is not safe? The safety aspect of it, you know, it's, it's a great place for all sorts of things to happen in there.
Sure. No, I mean, we can absolutely have code enforcement take a look at and see what tools are appropriate, you know, for it. I, I think I have an idea which one you're talking about.
Snakes. Drugs and snakes. That ties together real well.
Okay. So any more questions before we move on? Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. The last thing, or not the last, the next thing I wanted to talk about was, this is a conversation that started with Mr. Brown. Wanted to discuss the possibility of maybe the planning board doing a field trip somewhere. And I'll just kind of, for those of you that may not be familiar, you know, the planning board every couple of years or as needed, has, you know, kind of rented a, a large passenger van. And we've hopped in and, and gone and driven to other communities or developments in the region just to get, you know, see how other communities are, are solving, you know, challenges in, in their own way and see if there's any lessons learned, if there's aspects of, you know, development projects that we want to learn from or just, you know, see what works and doesn't work well. We've used that as an opportunity. I think I've been a part of at least one, if not two of them. I think they've been really very successful. But Mr. Brown was just mentioning to me, I think maybe after the last meeting or some other time in between, that, you know, maybe a good time to have that discussion with the planning board to see if there's an interest to climb back aboard and, and take a tour like that. It, it generally is during the business day so that, you know, that would need to be, you know, taken into account. But, you know, Mr. Brown, I'll kind of turn it over to you to see if you have any feedback you want to discuss with the members.
Well, I just think it's good that we have some idea as to what's happening possibly in South Carolina or whatever is happening in North Carolina and other towns. I think we can always learn from that.
I think, I mean, Mr. Brown asked me for just a, a couple of ideas, you know, of what, so what would we go and take a look at? And so just some, you know, knee-jerk ideas that I had would, you know, again, I mentioned that the town's going to be undertaking the Main Street, you know, project. You know, and that's certainly going to facilitate, you know, we hope to facilitate a lot of private investment in our downtown and really, you know, make a, a big change, a positive change. And so one thought might be is, do we want to take a look at any smaller, medium-sized downtowns in our area? Just to, you know, see if any recent projects that they've. just to, you know, see if any recent projects that they've had that we could, you know, pull from as reference points? The other piece, and this kind of dovetails with some of the comments Ms. Towns made earlier is, you know, we're seeing, you know, and it's no surprise to the planning board or to the council for that matter, you know, a lot of newer residential communities are on smaller lots. And that's, that's not just an Indian Trail trend, that's a, at a minimum, that's a regional trend, if not larger into the national realm. And so would it be beneficial to go and take a look at some, you know, smaller lot residential communities and see what, what lessons learned there are, or things that we could take away that we may want to incorporate into neighborhoods that build in our community and are things that we just want to avoid? Do we see things that, hey, we definitely don't want that? And so that was just another idea, and Mr. Spurk's got a question.
Yes, a recommendation, and I'm just curious about it. How is Marshville, the other end of the expressway, handling it?
I think in terms of the expressway.
Yeah, well, all of it, because they're a town that I think is very similar to ours and they're just on the opposite end of the expressway.
The only thing I can, I could add to that is, is I know Marshville is, you know, they're engaging in a study as well, just like Indian Trail, is much, I think, a much larger scope study than we are. But I know that they're looking at things kind of, you know, comprehensively, trying to see what opportunities might exist with this expressway investment. Because I think they're definitely yearning for some investment in their community. Okay, any, so I guess, you know, Mr. Brown, again, yield to you if there's any, if any other members had ideas? Or I guess first thing is, do you think it's a good idea?
Some ideas?
I've been asking for a field trip in town.
I knew I heard it from someplace.
We just want to make it a week long and go to the Bahamas.
Check out some foreign governments.
That's a different, that's a different, that's a different trip.
Different field trip.
I won't be on that one. So, okay, so it sounds like I heard, I saw some heads nodding that the idea of, you know, of this type of, you know, day trip, if you will, would be a good idea. Was there anything in particular, Mr. Brown, you know, discussed maybe some things in South Carolina? Is there anything, any of the other members in, Mr., you know, had, you know, had some other, you know, had comments about, you know, at the other end of the expressway? Is there any other, any other thoughts, other developments or areas of the community, the region you'd like to see? Just, yes, sir.
Tell you what, Indian land is just absolutely booming. And I don't know how they're handling it, but that probably would be a good area to look at.
They are booming. It's, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, Indian land's growing like a, at a pace in, you know, the intensity that you don't see very often. And not only on the residential side, but also for the light industrial side as well. And, you know, the, again, as we talked about earlier with the SECRIS study, and the economic development centers the state is able to offer is unmatched. And it's showing in terms of the kind of development that they're getting. And so we could certainly, you know, peel some areas off of Indian land. Again, I think, you know, particularly in the residential side, I think there's, they are able to, they're doing a lot of that small lot-type style development as well, you know, 50, 60-foot wide lots. You know, there might be some good areas for us to look at. I know a couple of Indian Trail employees actually live in Indian land and they might be able to help us zero in. And there's also some commercial developments going on. There's a Lidl shopping center that, actually it's opened, if I'm not mistaken. There, that, you know, we have a Lidl under construction on, at 74 and Unionville Indian Trail Road. But there are other things that we can maybe, you know, learn from. And, and so that's, that's good feedback, Mr. Spurk's feedback is very good, and Ms. Towns as well. Yes, ma'am.
The one thing that I would like to see for the town is some sort of organization of how things are placed in an area of land. You know, we have an entertainment center, but it's a hodgepodge, it just looks junky. And, you know, if we could possibly see how other areas spread out their commercial development, you know, in a nicer, more softer way. Because, you know, this junkiness is something that a lot of people complain about.
No, I think that's a, I think that's an interesting comment. And I think that's something we can do is looking at these regional, I'll just call them regional centers in terms of the types of businesses that they, that are permitted and, and how, you know, and how they develop. And that's one of the things, you know, we've, as part of going back to the UDO update project, we've asked them to look at some of, some of these districts in terms of the uses that are allowed. And are we allowing too many types of uses there? Let's say in the village center overlays, should we tighten that up? Should we open it up a little bit, you know, I mean, help us, you know, kind of guide us a little bit more with that. And, but I think in terms of looking at what other, other communities that have, you know, they don't have quote village centers, but they have areas that are similar in character that we could look at and get a better feel for. So when we have other projects come before the planning board, you have a reference model of, you know, what might work well.
One of the oldest communities in the nation is up in Virginia Beach. You know, First Landing was up there. But one of the things that I noticed is that they did an absolutely fabulous job of building roads and putting the infrastructure in there and their zoning. So that they, they actually had a moratorium against any building until they got the, the roads in and the infrastructure. Then it boomed. And they did a beautiful job. If we could get some information from them on how they did it, that might be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely some other, you know, other areas of the country have different tools they can use for infrastructure investment. You know, Florida, I mean, I'm not familiar terribly with Virginia, but I mean, there are other, you know, state, you know, the states, you know, allow a lot more tools. In North Carolina, and I think we've talked about this, it has a very narrow set of tools that we can use to help fund infrastructure investment. And so that's oftentimes what we yield is that, you know, the tools that we have available are limited in, versus what, you know, you can do in Florida or maybe even in Virginia with various, you know, establishing a level of service and getting impact fees and various other things that can be used to fund infrastructure.
And the other thing about Virginia Beach is it's the largest resort area in the United States.
Great. So we can, we can get together and plan a trip?
I think we, I think we can, what we would probably do is, first, we'll probably wait till it's not bitter cold. Might be the first step one. But what we'd probably do is put together some ideas and share it with you. Make sure this is capturing, you know, what you'd like to see. Again, it's, we've got to try to stay within a reasonable, you know, distance so we can actually see things and we're not just, you know, putting the pedal to the metal on the, on the van, if you will. And we'll shop some dates and times and things like that. But, you know, we'll be happy to put something together and, but we'd probably share it with you before we committed anything to make sure we've captured something that's truly, you're going to get some benefit and value out of. So, but we'll be happy to.
Every one on the board agree a trip is a good idea? Okay, well, we're all agree.
Okay. The last thing on the agenda is planning report, and I think I've, I've probably, I've probably kicked off my planning report already. So I think, other than, you know, they say that, you know, the planning department's doing very well. We're staying very busy, it's, you know, we're hitting the post-holiday season, you know, kind of, you know, running at a good sprint. And we're excited about 2018, as I shared with you a few minutes ago. We've got some exciting projects that we'll be working on that we're going to need your support on and is really the entire community's support on. But we think it's going, they're going to be some, you know, great products for our community. And we're just excited for what the New Year's bringing to us. And we thank you.
Okay, that's your report.
That's fine, that's all I got.
Okay. I hear an adjournment, make a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn and go home.
Second?
You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Go home, go.